I call the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting to order. Today is March 24, 2014. It is 6:00 p.m. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any representative from the Riverbank Ministers? None? Let's please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Conflict of interest. Any Council Authority Member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict now. Seeing none, we're going to go directly to number two, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments tonight?
My name is Vicky Holt Angulo, and I'm the Library Branch Manager at the Riverbank Library. We have a lot of programs coming up in April. We continue to have free English classes for Spanish speakers on Tuesday mornings and Wednesday mornings from 10:00 to 11:00. Vida Tax volunteers prepare free taxes or prepare their taxes for free from 1:00 to 5:00 on Wednesdays, and you need to call the library at 869-700-8000 in order to get on the list. Puppet Art Theater will perform on Thursday, April 3, at 3:30 p.m. Books will be given away after the program, and both the books and the program are paid for by a Target grant. We're going to have an estate planning program on Monday, April 7, at 2:00 p.m. A local attorney, Gina Leguria, will discuss the importance of estate planning and how to do it, and the public is invited. Storytime is on break and will resume April 14 at 10:30, which is a Monday, 10:30 in the morning. All the libraries in Stanislaus County are participating in the Snuggles Project, in which blankets are made for the animals at the shelter. Blanket guidelines are found on our website, www.stanislauslibrary.org. Last year, the library, all 13 of the libraries, gave 649 Snuggle blankets, of which Riverbank donated 35 blankets. The deadline for delivering the blankets is April 30. All programs at the library are free to the public. It's due to the Eighth of Assent's dedicated sales tax that these library services are available. Please stop by and visit. You are always welcome, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council through the consent calendar, consisting of Item 3A, wave readings; Item 3B, approval of March 10, 2014, regular city council minutes; Item 3C, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 214-002 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, amending Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 150, Building Regulations, repealing Sections 150.01 through 150.15, and establishing new standard codes for Sections 150.01 through 150.15, adopting by reference the 2013 edition of the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Plumbing Code, California Electrical Code, California Fire Code, California Mechanical Code, California Energy Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Code, and California Referenced Standards Code with appendices and amendments thereto. Do I have any comments or questions, or anyone want to pull any of the consent items?
Mayor, I would like to make a correction to the minutes. Resolutions Number 011, 012, and 013 should actually be 013, 014, and 015, respectively. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item or discuss an item? Seeing none, I am here for a recommendation.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second for the consent calendar.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council Authority Member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5, public hearings, consisting of Item 5.1, consideration of, one, adopting a resolution approving the new proposed solid waste services and related fee increases; and, two, adoption of a resolution approving the city manager to enter into new franchise agreement with Jilton Solid Waste Management Incorporated to continue providing residential and commercial solid waste services.
Mayor O'Brien and members of the City Council, this evening, we had planned to bring you a new franchise agreement with Jilton for your consideration, along with a new rate structure consistent with the direction that was given earlier this year. As we were preparing for the public notice and for the presentation this evening, we went back and double-checked a couple of things in consultation with our attorneys, and it was determined on second review that our trash rates would be subject to Proposition 218. This is a proposition that was passed by the voters of California in 1996 in an effort to get more notice and more control over rates and assessments. And while my understanding is that there are some fees that were initially not anticipated to be included, that through case law throughout the course of the few years, that things have changed, and that is directing some of the decisions that have been made in regards by our attorney about whether or not this applies to the City of Riverbank's trash rates. And so this evening, we have Barbara Brenner, who is sitting in for Tom Hallinan as our city attorney. Tom is in the City of Oakdale this evening, but Barbara's been working with us on Proposition 218, and so it was great timing that she would be able to be here this evening to provide an overview for the council of what this proposition is, what it does, and what it means for the City of Riverbank. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Barbara Brenner.
Good evening. This is a pretty quick overview of Prop. 218. As indicated, it's become a pretty complicated body of law over the last 10-plus years, and the case law continues to evolve. So when we look at this, we take a look at a fairly conservative point of view because subsequent litigation's even more expensive than compliance, as always. But given the current draft of the franchise agreement, we did concur that 218 applied to the agreement as long as there's going to be a fixed rate increase. So go ahead. So this is kind of the basic reasoning why approval of the agreement would require 218 compliance. And this, obviously, if the franchise agreement doesn't automatically lead to a rate increase, then you wouldn't, Prop. 218 would not apply. So that's the key thing here. And you can structure the agreement to allow for, you could sign the agreement prior to 218, but it would have to allow for the 218 process and the conclusion of that process in order to be valid if you wanted to raise the rates. So there's, because this indicates that the franchise, you must comply with 218 prior to approval, where you could structure the agreement to approve it prior to a Prop. 218 hearing and still have a subsequent rate increase. That's the important distinction there. But you would have to have the flexibility in the agreement. So that's just a kind of a side note. But the city code requires all the residents generating trash to use the city's solid waste service provider, and that's one of the key findings in this application of 218. And then the city is actually the one imposing, collecting, and enforcing the disposal rates under your municipal code. And then the third one, which I was just clarifying earlier, the agreement may lead to a rate increase. And those are the three important factors that trigger the compliance of 218. So from our perspective, as, like I said, is currently suggested, or the current plan is what we would suggest is you finalize the agreement is the next step. And again, that could come before, after, or during a 218 process, depending on how you structure that particular agreement. But if the agreement is going to have a definite rate increase, you have to comply with 218 prior. That's the key factor. So the next step would be to perform the rate study. In order to justify any increase in rates, we have to have the nexus of the rate to the service provided, and we do that via a rate study. So it doesn't matter if it's trash collection, water fees, depending on the fees, any other kind of basic tax or assessment. We have to show that the rate being imposed is equally imposed against those that are getting the service provided. So we call it a nexus test. There has to be a nexus between the fee and the service provided. We do that through the hiring of a consultant, and they perform a rate study, and that rate study then supports our 218 findings. So the 218 process requires a 45-day advanced hearing notice. The notice must explain the rate increase, which is why we need the study first, and then provide the basic time, date, and location of the public hearing. It has to be mailed to all the property owners who receive solid waste services. And then, in this instance, no, go ahead, you're fine, it's a validation proceeding. So there's no ballots, there's no vote necessary in this rate increase, but what is allowed is a protest hearing or protests to be provided to the city. So if the city, after the notification, receives a majority, the property owners object to the rate increase, the city cannot impose the rate increase. So it's instead of a positive ballot voting process, it's if you get so many negative votes or protests, then you cannot increase the rate. And that's why it's tied directly to whether there's a rate increase in the franchise agreement. You have to get approval of that rate increase before you can sign an agreement imposing the rate increase. So that's the short version of the 218 process. And then the next, of course, you've got to validate and certify the votes, and then you enact the rate adoption if the process is successful. So that's a quick overview for the 218 process in this instance, and like I said, you need to do the rate study before you can do the notice, because we use the rate study to supply the information in the notice, and then you need 45 days minimum prior to the hearing for the notice to be published and circulated.
I have a couple of questions. First, you stated residents, then you stated property owners. Is it both or either-or or one?
It's the property owners, and when we have tenants, when we have folks other than the property owners that are paying the fee, then we also send it to that person that's paying the fee. So in this instance, if you have a tenant in a home, and that tenant is paying for the waste disposal, then we would recommend that that person also get notice. But you only count one protest per APN or per lot.
Right. For commercial is separate, is that a separate vote?
It depends on how the garbage, how the waste disposal's being.
Isn't it separate? One is 5%, the other one is at 20%?
It would go to who's paying the fee.
Not the property owner.
Well, we recommend doing it to both, just because the way the statute's written is not clear. And then subsequent, again, the subsequent case law has indicated that in some instances, you should give notice to the one that's actually paying for the service, whereas the statute says you give it to the property owner. So what we recommend is that you provide notice to both the property owner and the person providing, that's paying the actual fee. And then again, if you've got a commercial piece, then you're, it's only, you can only count as many people are getting, that are paying for that service.
For example, there's a shopping complex that has 50 units in it, that's retail, and the property owner says, no, does it go for 50 votes or is it just one vote?
Do you have 50 different bills going out?
Yes, you do. So you want 50 different bills, different people?
If they're all paying for the service, and they're, each one of those is going to be, their rate's going to be increased, then yes.
What if there's a conflict between, let's say, I have a rental for housing, and it conflicts with the tenant?
If the tenant objects, and they're paying the bill, that's the only basis that the tenant could vote, then their vote counts, even if the property owner doesn't object, because the tenant's paying the bill.
But the property owner would be the one responsible if the tenant defaults.
That's right.
And I'm sure we have a consultant that will charge us a considerable fee for garbage?
For the rate study?
Yes.
And that's what my question was. My question was, who pays for this process of the 218, all of the study that we have to do and the mailing and all of this? Who pays for that? I guess we do.
Nor, right. I mean, the city ultimately has to do the process. How you allocate the costs associated with that process is something that you could then put into the rate structure, you could put it into some other general fund structure, but generally speaking, the city is the one that has to increase the rates and has to go through the process in order to do that.
And do you have an estimate as to how much it might cost the city?
In this instance, I've talked to Jill a little bit about it, and based on my experience in other 218 processes, I see this to be somewhere in between the $15,000 and $20,000 maximum, but probably closer to the $10,000 to $15,000.
And then also, on page 3, it says that ballots are not required, but then the city clerk would validate the votes. So would it be when they receive their notice, it's like on the bottom, the tear-off sheet?
It's an affirmative protest process. So sometimes when you do a 218, you have to actually send out ballots and get a certain number of votes in favor of the increase. In this instance, it's a protest process under 218, and so that you send notice out, and if you don't get a majority of protests, then you can move forward. So it's actually not a ballot that goes out, it's actually a notice that says that you can protest, and this is how you protest.
Oh, so there's directions to say you can protest in this manner?
Right. Versus an affirmative vote in favor.
And I have one last question. What kind of timeframe are we looking at turnaround for this process?
Well, it's a 45-day minimum hearing notice, and prior to doing the 45-day notice, you need the rate study. So depending on how you contract for a consultant to do the rate study, you don't need to go through a public bid process because it's a specialized service. So you could engage a consultant in 30 days, have the consultant prepare the rate study, depending on how complicated it gets, in 30 days to 60 days, and then you can move forward on your hearing, your noticing of the hearing.
I have a question. In the language, it says a rate increase cannot be imposed if written protests are submitted by a majority of property owners. Doesn't say anything about rental owners, but as the mayor said. But then it also says throughout the notice period and during the public hearing. So is it both the public hearing and the voting process, or just one or the other?
They can protest anytime after that 45-day notice, all the way up through the hearing. So you can have protests that start as soon as you notice the 45-day hearing, that you can start receiving protests to the rate increase, and then during the hearing, you may receive a number of protests.
I have a hypothetical situation. What if the property owners didn't vote a majority, but you got a meeting, and the majority of the meeting did?
Then you still have a majority of the property owners. But in other instances, your scenario would be a different answer, if you want to know the truth. So like I said, the Prop. 218 process has become a muddied mess.
I could see why.
To say the least. And in this instance, it's actually one of the more straightforward 218 processes that we have to do. So I mean, there's something to say for that, I suppose.
Thank you for your clarification.
This is a public hearing, and I would like to open for a public hearing. Any public comment?
I have a question. My understanding under Prop. 218 is that no fee or may be imposed for a service unless that service is actually used? Shall I wait? My understanding under Prop. 218 is that no fee can be imposed unless the service is actually used.
That's right. That's the purpose of the nexus study, correct?
So in February, when you passed the rate increase, you didn't only pass it for the garbage collection, you added extra programs in there, like bulky waste, electronic waste, Christmas tree program. And then there was one, very interesting one, for an illegal dump program, which only applied to legal dumping on public property. So those things need to be looked at, too, to see if they are kosher with Prop. 218?
That'll be part of the rate study.
Okay. Because they may not be studied, especially the public property, when there may be something that's not going to apply.
The homeowner fee may not justify that particular portion of the program.
Yeah, well, like I said, the one for the illegal dumping only applies to public property, it doesn't apply to private property, so, okay.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Shuler. I'm with Jilton Solid Waste Management. I wasn't really going to speak this evening, but I think one of the phrases I heard this evening was that, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name, ma'am.
Barbara Brenner.
Ms. Brenner. You used a term that you're being extremely conservative. I'd have to agree. We represent 10 jurisdictions in terms of waste management services, and I have never seen to this point where a rate study was required. We have gone through some 218 processes, but I'm unfamiliar with this requirement for a rate study, and is this something new in case law?
You have to have the nexus. If you can justify the rates independent of a consultant, if you can show that nexus and meet that nexus test, which is getting more and more stringent.
And who judges whether the nexus has been achieved?
Ultimately, the public, but the city council in the first instance.
So if the city council had enough data and information that they believed that there was a clear nexus in terms of the services, they could choose to do that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They could use staff to develop the connection, you know, the nexus.
Okay. All right. I'm just, I'm asking a question because this, I was in, this is very new ground for us, and we just recently went through a 218 process in a city not too long ago. And the rest of your presentation regarding the notification process and everything was consistent with what we've seen in the past, but this need for an outside rate study to be done was new to me. So I was just curious and wondering.
There's certainly that alternative. If staff feels comfortable making a recommendation, they can create that nexus.
Okay.
What's important from a legal perspective is that the nexus is fully fleshed out and clear.
All right. Great, thank you. And I'm also here if you have questions, if any of the council member have questions from our company. Thank you.
See no further public comment. Unclose the public hearing. This time, direct matters to be rescheduled for a future date and have a public notice process to be repeated to reflect the requirements of Proposition 218.
Mayor, Mr. City Council, what I was asking Barbara earlier was whether or not we had authority to appropriate public noticing to request authority to move forward with the consultant rate study. My understanding was that we needed to have an engineer's report and that staff could not develop that nexus. It's something that I'd like to look into. The concern I have is in terms of the amount of time that we can devote, particularly in light of the budget season, and whether or not it would be something we could actually do in-house, or we would need to get a consultant. We also need to continue to work with Jilton to finalize the details of the franchise and determine what the timing is. I do have to compliment Jilton. They've been very cooperative through the negotiation process. It's been a very cordial discussion of issues between our attorneys and their attorneys, and we were very close. And so it's unfortunate that we're not able to present something to you for action this evening, and I would like to thank Dennis, who's leading that team, for the work that he's put into this and for being here tonight. So I will ask publicly if we have the authority, if we need to get some direction from the council to spend any money or to have Churchill White hire a consultant on our behalf.
Is that part of our, can we do that? It's not part of the staff. I mean, we could, but it's not part of the agenda.
No, and I want to see if by noticing the franchise agreement and the rate structure, if that was, if there's sufficient public noticing to receive direction.
I suggest that you can provide direction to investigate and determine the cost and get some cost estimates for the rate study, or if there's an alternative avenue to go down. And then if it's determined by staff that it's a rate study, you could bring a couple of proposals or one recommended proposal and contract for approval by the city council.
I have another question. Exactly what does a consultant do to establish this rate study?
They look at the cost of providing the service and the number of people being provided the service and the type of service being provided, and then, and just connect the dots, so to speak. They'll have, oh, and they'll have operation and maintenance, they'll have capital expenditure, things like that that go into that study. That's why I said in this instance, it That's why I said in this instance, you don't have so much of those kind of costs. You're going to have more of a straightforward cost of service, but there should still be some consideration of maintaining, operating and maintaining the trucks or the, I would say, the fleet to collect.
If I understand you, the consultant is going to study our waste management company and more or less take a look to see what their expenses are, costs are for running the service, basically. Am I understanding that right? That's a part of it. And you see if that effectively bears having that rate increase because of their increased costs or, you know, the cost of the service to them.
As well as your miniature fee associated with billing the client, collecting, et cetera.
Okay.
And also can come up with a higher cost.
Absolutely.
And that's one thing that I'm kind of concerned about, since it's still one of the lowest rates in the county.
Mm-hmm.
And the other ones have not been yet, you know, been increased in about the same amount of years, so it could go to $24 without any additional services, possibly.
Yes, possibly.
So with the direction that we said, come back at a future date, with an entire plan?
Yes. Thank you.
One more question before we move on. If we do the study, well, if we were to move forward, let's just say if we, like we had said, come up with an agreement, and then we had enough protests, and we say we were going to increase our rates, and then if we had a protest, enough of a protest, then we would have to reduce the rates back down to where they were originally?
Correct.
Thanks.
Or not have the services. Can we move into new business? Item 6.1, agreement with the Riverbank Rotary Club to assume the event rights for the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival.
Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, we have been working with the Rotary Club of Riverbank to take over the Cheese and Wine Festival, and that process has been taking place over the course of the last six weeks. We have come to an agreement that we could present to you for action this evening. I would like Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick, who's been leading the negotiations on behalf of the city, to present an overview of that process. I'd also like to acknowledge the Rotary members in the audience, and I think John Les is the person here representing, the official representative for the Rotary tonight. The president wasn't able to be here. And then we also have additional members to hear. Sue, thank you so much for being here. So just before Sue provides the overview, I would just like to compliment the Rotary for not only the work that they've done on the Cheese and Wine Festival, but throughout Riverbank, they give so much, and we just appreciate that their efforts through this. And while we're in negotiations and going forward, it is a pleasure to acknowledge their good work that they do on behalf of the city.
Mayor, members of the council. Let me put on my glasses. Back in January, when we came to the city council for direction on what we should do, whether the city should take over the Cheese and Wine Festival or not, we didn't really know, we thought we were just going to take it over. We didn't really understand about the signing over the rights and all of that, so that kind of came after. So as Jill mentioned, that's what we've been kind of trying to negotiate over the last six to eight weeks. But negotiations with the Rotary Club have been ongoing to purchase the rights to conduct the festival. Since we were given the direction to send out a RFP and get moving along on that respect, to find an event coordinator to handle the festival, we proceeded with that, and that is complete. So at least we've been moving along with that, because we did mention that we could do the festival if we were able to hire someone to do that. So that's just kind of an update. During the time that we've kind of looked at all of the factors in taking over the festival, we've kind of listed some things to consider. Since 2006, the Rotary Club has succeeded in providing a popular, safe, and enjoyable event. A lot of people have told us times have changed, it's been a little bit more difficult for festivals to draw the crowds that they used to draw. Vendor numbers are down. We found that at the peak, the vendor numbers were around 250. They've decreased to around 150 vendors, which is concerning. The event attendance is down. The way we kind of determine that is from what we were hearing, and also it used to be very difficult to find a parking place when you came down on the Cheese and Wine Day. Now it's not quite as difficult, so that shows that there's not quite as many people here. In looking at the finances, Marcella and I both looked at the finances that the Rotary Club gave us over the past three years. Actually, with the eight years that the Rotary Club ran the festival, three of the years, it did lose money, so we wanted to look at that. The past three years, though, the statements show a profit of, in 2011, $11,001.47; 2012, it was about $15,740; and 2013, $15,716, which looked better. The problem that we were kind of having is there was not sufficient information to understand the revenue last year, because there was $15,000 that was uncategorized income. We don't really know where that source of income came from, so it was hard to determine is that something that would be there again this next year, or is that something that would go away? So that was a little bit of something we wanted to consider. The revenue sources for the festival, after getting the information together, there's six. The vendors, which were the number-one revenue generator, beer and wine were the close second and third. Coca-Cola and Kid Zone were the least amount of the revenue source. And then sponsorships were good, and that's something that we'd definitely rely on. And whether that's going to be there or not, you never really know for sure. So those are just the revenue sources that we looked at. What we did receive is the latest proposal. We did get a proposal from the Rotary Club, and we actually just updated it again. So we have some proposals to show you and to kind of get direction from you on which way we should go. Proposal number one is the city receives all event rights and limited property, which there aren't many assets, $15,000 for $15,000, and that's a change from originally the proposal was for $20,000, and that was reduced, which is a good thing, just last Friday. So it'd be a $15,000 buyout over the course of five years, with the first $3,000 being paid prior to the first festival weekend, and then the four remaining installments annually thereafter. And this would only continue if the city did decide to continue the festival. So if we decided after the first year that it didn't work out for us, it was a failure, or it just didn't work, we would be done with the $3,000.
Before we move on to another proposal, what are the pluses and negatives on this proposal?
On this one, it would be clear. We would know what our costs are. We would be able to plan for that and look at our risks a little bit closer, feel a little bit more comfortable in that. It also would give the event coordinator the ability to make a lot of the decisions from the beginning, without being tied into any binding agreements. The installments would only continue, like I said, if the festival continues. If the event rights are sold, if the city at some point said, "We don't want to do this, but we want to sell it to somebody else," we would need to pay the balance to the Rotary Club. This is a preferred proposal if the city decides to take the risk. Proposal number two would be the Rotary Club would sign over rights to the city for a 20% share of profit. The Rotary Club would work with the city on planning and dedicate some hours to the event, predominantly in advisory capacity. This proposal is not recommended, mainly because we want to be able to, if, say we do real well, we want to be able to be rewarded for that and know that that is something we can, we wouldn't have to give away 20% of the profits from the get-go. That's just kind of our take on that. The additional proposal just throws in that the Rotary Club is also requesting that we include in the agreement the approval of the Rotary Club to have their Iron Lung Polio fundraising booth on the festival street at no cost for three to five years. And that's not an issue at all for us. I don't know how council would feel, but that wouldn't be a problem. Overall determination, if the city council chooses to move forward with the event, we just want to really pass on the feeling that we have that it is coming with financial and operational risks, and we're feeling that as we're looking over all the information. It's important to understand there's no guarantees. Staff will make every effort to make it successful, but we just don't know for sure how it will If the proposals that the Rotary submitted are declined, the other option is to encourage the Rotary to reconsider managing the festival or consider selling the festival to another If directed to proceed, staff would return with a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Rotary to assume event rights with the terms consistent with the direction of the city council tonight, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for an event coordinator not to exceed $20,000, and an authorization and allocation of $5,000 in the 2013-14 budget as seed money to address miscellaneous planning expenses just to get it started, which we would replenish if we did well. We would put that money back.
I'd like to clarify the recommendation, and that is that if the council wants to proceed and to give me authority, is that the authority would be given this evening to move forward, particularly with the execution of a contract with an event coordinator, so we can move forward. And then we would come back just for confirmation of the vegetarian matters for the record.
And while we're having questions or comments, I'll have the slide up, too, with the three, the two proposals and the other additional option. It is recommended that the final decision be made tonight in order for staff to be able to move on. This has been a lot of kind of back and forth negotiating where we'd like to be able to move forward with the event and also move forward with our other obligations. So any question?
What are the options? We have actually three options: not take it. Option one that you said that you prefer is the city proposal number one.
Correct.
Or proposal number two. You're comfortable with proposal number one?
I am. I've kind of discussed with staff as well, and I know we've all kind of discussed that proposal one seems fair, seems that meets everybody's intent, I think, as to feel a little bit safer in Rotary to make sure that they are compensated for something that they've worked very hard on.
So do we have any kind of, any idea of a cost for the planning, for the event coordinator, what they were paid in the past?
We did, we do have that information. It's kind of, when looking at the financials over the last three years, there were some overlapping, but it was anywhere between probably $20,000 to $29,000. I know that when they lost money, it was on a year or two where they contracted it out, and I think that they paid about $40,000 to the event coordinator, if that's correct.
You're about right.
Is that about right? Things are probably somewhat in the ballpark. We probably don't have all the figures exactly right, but we tried to at least get a feel for that.
If we approve this, when, and we approve the event coordinator also, when would you start taking steps to have this person come to work? And approximately, how much time would you think this event coordinator is going to be giving us, per se?
What we would do, if council gives us this direction to move forward, we would proceed tomorrow. And they would come in, and we would start negotiating the contract. We already know the amount, but how that would work, we already kind of got an idea when we did the RFP, and we did the interviews on how much time they would need, because we were concerned how much staff time. All three of the people we interviewed are very experienced, so they have their ducks in a row as far as how to do a festival, and they would tell us what they need, but they would start right away.
Because I'm not very educated on this, would the event coordinator start working and just be doing things at different times and tell the festival to pull the things together? And as the festival came more to climax, you know, maybe be a little bit more involved to make sure everything's going correctly?
Yes, because what will happen first is vendors are already calling. So they'd start setting up the website, and they'd set up the phone numbers and all of that, so vendors can start getting their spots. And then money would start coming in, sponsorships would be pursued. So they'd be doing that on their own. And then as we get closer in months, it'd be a lot more meetings with myself and the streets and the parks crew, just to make sure we have the logistics of the city in order, and with the sheriff's department as well. All of that would start increasing as we got a little bit closer. And then the weekend of, there are some things that we would be doing a little bit differently, using city staff, or these people have already subcontractors they work with. So what is the least expensive to contract with these subcontractors or for the city to work it into our crews already that can do it? So we'll kind of look at those type of things, but it'll escalate as we get closer to the time. So it's not necessarily an hourly type of thing, it's a task. It's you are going to pull off this festival and do your best to make sure that the city doesn't lose money and that it's a nice festival.
Okay. So the whole key to this would be getting a reputable event coordinator that could do the job and, you know, earn the pay that we're giving them?
Correct.
Okay.
And meeting with the community is part of that, because they're going to want to get a feel for what is going to work for our community. And also, meeting with the nonprofits, because we still want the nonprofits, they're used to making money.
That would be my question, yeah.
We have to look and see, can they still make what they were, they may not make what they made before. We'll have to look and see, but maybe they can. So all of those things are what's going to happen now, soon, like starting right away.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Any public comment?
John Les, Riverbank Rotary, but I'm just here to try to field any questions anybody might have. If I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know. So if there are any questions. I noticed one thing that was on the screen, and I'm not sure, Sue, if, when we had the three years of profits across there, was that profits after our contributions to the various? Okay. Because we kind of look at profits in two different ways. We had a net profit before we made our donations to all of the other FFA and all the other nonprofits that helped us, and then we ended up with that on the bottom line. So just wanted to clarify that.
John, my question was, I know that the different organizations have received, as you say, a donation for their work at the festival, so I'm assuming that the different organizations receive different monetary amounts, depending upon the amount of work or number of volunteers, or something along those lines?
Yes, kind of the type of work and the number of volunteers involved. And I don't have a formula that was used.
And so there would be some way of crafting that into what we're proposing?
It's part of what the coordinator will do, just like it has in the past.
Okay.
It's the way this festival has ran for 37 years.
Has always been, okay.
And there's set vendors that you're going to be using to provide the ice, to provide, you know, the, I don't know, if we buy it, do we get the walkie-talkies? That's an important issue there. But I know there are certain items that they have that they've used for.
Right. Well, I think it's just important to maybe publicly say that so that the community service organizations know what they can be expecting over the next several months before we hold our festival again. Thank you, John.
I had a question. If we go with neither one of the proposals and we go with the option, would Rotary be managing that or not? Would you be putting the event on or not?
Do I have to answer that? No. And it's getting pretty late to go to a third-party outside source to try to market it, right, at this time. at this time. We just don't have the manpower, the person power, excuse me. So I would say no. Okay? Any others? Okay.
But I will say, as Rotarian, we really want it to go. We'll do everything we can to help the city, because it is, it's a big part of Riverbank. As Rotarians, we want it more than anything, that somebody can do it in the city and be the best.
I just have one question, but first, I'm just curious, are any of the council members members of the Rotary?
I'm a member of the Rotary.
Not a conflict?
The Rotary consists of a board of directors, which I am not part of the board of directors, nor do I have any financial interest in the Rotary Club, nor do I get any compensation.
Checking, just curious. So what I'm understanding here is between the 15,000 to them and the 5,000 seed money and the 20,000 with the coordinator, you're, city's putting up $40,000? What fund does it come in out of?
The anticipation is all of it will be paid for by the Cheese and Wine Festival profits.
But if it isn't, what fund does it come in out of?
It'll be out of the general fund.
Sorry, speak to that? Is it a certain part of the general fund? I'm just curious, because that's a lot of money for a city that doesn't have much money to spend. That's a lot of money. And I'm all for the cheese and wine, at least the way it used to be. If it's run the way it has been, it isn't going to go anywhere. The other question I have is, you say that you are buying the rights, like in the contract, from the Rotary, with the logos, the designs, all that stuff. Are you actually buying back the right to use the city's name, the right to use the city's logo, which they've been using? You actually sold it to them and you're buying it back? I'm just a little confused on that.
Yes, would you like me to answer it this time?
Yeah, please.
So the issue of the rights is more to the festival, the Cheese and Wine Festival and the artwork, the names, the website, the vendor list, the forms, et cetera. They have used the city logo as part of their advertising for the event. That has been something we've gotten as a partial sponsor of the event. It is not something we're not, that's not something we have ever sold the rights to or we're buying the rights back to. It's really just another, it's just something that they use as part of promoting the event.
And a government logo you don't sell. You cannot sell, but it can be used.
Just to clarify, just the proposal number one, we wouldn't have to pay 20,000. It's 15, but it's also only 3,000 the first year. If we were unsuccessful, say we didn't create enough revenue to pay all of this back, and we wouldn't be looking at that, and then we wouldn't have to pay anymore. So it would only be $3,000. It wouldn't be 15. We would have the event coordinator, of course, but I would say, I would feel pretty confident that we would be able to, since we're going with probably the low bid of the 15,000. You know, the risk is not as much as it seems as far as that 20,000. That's only if we were to continue, and we'd only continue if we did well.
May I ask another question, Sue? How is the?
Let's continue with public comment.
Okay, sorry.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor.
How is the interest of the nonprofits been at this point in time toward the festival?
The nonprofits, I haven't had a lot of. I know that there is a couple of them that have expressed interest. We haven't gotten into that part of it yet. One of the first things on the agenda for the event coordinator would be to meet with the community and the nonprofits.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I feel like I need to say something. I'm struggling a little bit. I understand the dilemma the Rotary is, and I really appreciate your, the situation you guys are in. But I'm also feeling a little apprehensive about the risks that the city has to take. And again, I tend to be a little more on the conservative side, so I'm struggling with that a little bit, feeling that there's a risk there that we may not have been fully aware of when we, you know, first jumped into this and said that we would administer the event. So I'm struggling with that a little bit. And then it's just a comment, that's not really a question to be answered or anything. And I just wanted to throw that out there.
The risk could even be greater than just what we're paying the coordinator. It could rain, and we all want to pray for rain, but on this day, we do not. The event has historically made money, not every year, and there are times where it will not. Overall, it will. It's kind of like the stock market. The amount of money you're going to pay out to nonprofits would diminish if your profits diminish. You're not going to pay nonprofits more if it's going to be taken away from the total profits.
Understand that, too.
So it could be a money loser for various reasons, but not as great as, you know, the risk would be. If you start bringing in vendors now, you start bringing in revenues.
We also have spent three months working and negotiating with, and I understand it takes time, but those three months have passed now, and I know we're getting down to some crunch time. And I'm just also, along with those risks, I'm worried about the time and energy that the city staff, that we don't include some of that in some of these risks of the time and energy and time that we're taking up here on city business with this particular item, too. I just think we need to make a note of that also.
Well, I am in favor of proposal number one. I think that the event itself has really put Riverbank on the map. There are a lot of people, not just in Riverbank, but in other communities, that when you mention Riverbank, Cheese and Wine Festival, and I would just really hate to see it go away. I mean, I know that there are, as we have all stated, that there are risks involved, but so is everything else that we do. So I just think that we should consider proposal number one.
I have to agree with Councilman Martinez. The festival's been in the community a long time, and I realize there's a risk, and I realize that money's tight, and I'm still getting over this study on the Gilton program that we have to do and whatnot. But, you know, sometimes you have to take those risks. And one of the things I like about this, and I applaud Rotary for this, if this does fail, we don't have to continue with it. We're done with that particular part of the bill. And so I appreciate the flexibility that they've shown us with that. I realize there's a risk, and I know that it could go either way. But if it went to the positive side, it could be a very positive thing for our community. And it might even be financially more beneficial, too. And it could, with the right direction, pull our nonprofits even more together. So I think we need to look at all these things, and so I would support proposal number one.
I just have one more question. When you were interviewing, I don't know who all was on the interview team, but when you were interviewing the candidates for event coordinator, did, I'm assuming that one of the questions asked was, how would you propose to mitigate those kinds of risks?
Yeah, I don't think we asked it in that way, but we did explain our concerns, and we shared the financials with them to some extent. And the three that we interviewed, and Marcela was with me with two of them, and they know their business, they know, they know what's happening with the festivals around, and they know what, all of them feel we need to breathe new life into it. And if we do that, the potential for it to be very successful is there, but still there's some things working against us. What if we didn't get the sponsorships that we normally got? What if it rained? I mean, there's a lot of what ifs, but I think they're just going to look close to the numbers and just try to make it work, is what they, they were all very confident. So we felt good about all three candidates and that they know their, they know their work, so.
Can you tell me if one of the candidates was one of the event coordinators in the past for us?
I don't think that's, I don't want to hear that.
Oh. I'm just looking at their experience, that's all.
That's a staff decision, I don't want to.
Okay.
Yeah, just all of them were very experienced.
Okay, thank you. Local?
In the county, right?
Definitely, local.
Also, since there seems to be a concern about the possibility of rain, would it be better to have it a few weeks earlier, maybe at the end of September or something of that nature? Would that give us a chance of that?
I think that risk, that risk is still there, but there is, one of the people we interviewed talked about event insurance that you can get, and I think that that person has used event insurance before for rain. That's something we can, we can talk about and discuss in, when we're looking at all those.
My concern with changing the date just would be that the vendors have set aside this date on their calendars years in advance, and they look forward to the event being on the same weekend every single year. And if we change it, then we may create another set of problems.
My what if is what if we're going to make some changes to breathe new life into it? What if it just really was totally successful and we had 30,000 people here? How would we deal with that? So it's kind of a both. What if it was just hugely, completely?
That's a problem I think I'd like to have.
I don't know, that'll bring, I don't know how the sheriffs would feel about that. And then it could bring in other things, you know? It could go, an event can go in another direction very easy, and so that's the what if that I think goes through my mind as well, is what if we fail or what if we really succeed? It'd be nice to be just kind of in the middle. It'd be nice, but that probably wouldn't happen.
Thank you. No further discussion. I will entertain a motion on item 6.1.
I make a motion that we consider proposal number one.
Option, yeah, proposal number one?
I'll second.
We have a recommendation for item 6.1 on proposal number one, which the city receives all events rights and limited property, a $15,000 buyout over a period of five years, and $3,000 installment paid prior to the festival and the four remaining installments annually thereafter. And I have a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Item 6.2, a resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the additional appropriation of $5,500 from the general fund to complete the restoration of the North City Hall building by painting all exterior building walls.
Mayor O'Brien and members of the city council, you may have noticed the unique color scheme on the building when you drove up for tonight's meeting. I did want to assure you that that is not the permanent plan for the painting of the fascia on the City Hall building. As we've gone forward, we've been testing out different colors and seeing what they look like on different sides of the building and different lights. And as we're looking more closely at the building, we're realizing that we really should go ahead and paint the entire building. The fascia looked so bad that the regular stucco looked fine, but as we're replacing that and looking at it, we decided we needed to come back and ask for authority to go ahead and spend additional funds to paint the entire building. Sue Fitzpatrick is coordinating that effort, and she can provide a few more details for you, but we will, but we would like to ask for that authority in the amount of $5,500. And just to add, this is, this would be a general fund project, and the funds that would be used would be the amount of money that is over our 10% reserve, and that amount is approximately $165,000 any given day, and so we're asking for $5,500 for this particular project. And then also, there's a separate project, but it's a very small amount of the surplus to put back into our infrastructure. And if you have any further questions, Sue, again, is available to address those as well.
Any questions or comments?
We just need to finish it.
We will.
This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back for either discussion or a motion.
Are we just on 6.2 or both?
6.2.
I make a motion that we approve item 6.2.
Second that.
We have a motion to approve $5,500 from the general fund to complete the restoration of North City Hall, and we have a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 6.3, resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the additional appropriation of $6,500 from the general fund for the purchase of a new thermal blanket for the Riverbank Community Pool.
And I will hand it over to Sue Fitzpatrick.
This is Sue Knight.
This is Sue Knight.
Mayor, members of the council, the thermal blanket is a blanket that's used on the pool. We've used it at our pool for many years, that retains the heat in the pool, and it works really well. When we first purchased it, I wasn't aware how well it worked until I saw the energy bills dropping. And for the way we work, our pool is open so many hours that a solar blanket doesn't really work, because it has to be on the pool. But a thermal blanket, when you cover it up at night and the heater kicks in, especially early in the season, if that heat is retained, it makes it toward the heater, doesn't kick on much, and it just keeps that temperature in there. So our thermal blanket was purchased probably closer to 14 years ago. I'm thinking 13 or 14 years ago, and it's showing signs of wear and tear. It really isn't made to last that long. So what made us kind of think of that is we were hoping to ease the stress on our pool boiler, which we know is, you know, on its last working leg. The benefits of a thermal blanket, it does significantly reduce the heating costs, we've seen that. It does expand the life of the heating system, because it doesn't put so much stress on already a stressed unit. And not so much as a pool cover, but it does help by keeping the dirt out and other debris, at least in the evening hours. As part of our strategic plan that we've been working on, it is to work on maintaining our infrastructure, our heating and air conditioning systems. The pool heater was one thing that was listed in our items that we wanted to work on in the strategic plan and plan for replacing. Items and projects have been prioritized over the past few months, and it suggested that the thermal blanket be replaced at this time with increase, to assist with increasing the longevity of our pool boiler. And we'll replace the pool boiler in the 2016-17 fiscal year. So we're thinking we could just buy some time over the next two summers with the thermal blanket, which is a lot less expensive and needs to be replaced anyway. What made us not put this in mid-year, we kind of came about this a little bit late, was because we found out about an incentive program through PG&E, and it's called the School Energy Efficiency Program. And the reason that the city qualifies for that is we are the only pool in town, and the school district uses our pool very frequently for filter trips. And that's how, it's the same incentive program that replaced our variable frequency drive or added one at our pool, and that saved us a lot of money already, just so that that system isn't turning over as often. We do have that, the incentive program is going to go very quickly. We do have a placeholder on that. It is first come, first served. The total cost of the thermal blanket is $9,400. The incentive is $2,900. It's a nice incentive. Our cost would be $6,500, and this would be a general fund expense. Just questions, and it is recommended that city council adopt a resolution authorizing the additional appropriation of the $6,500 from the general fund for the purchase of a new thermal blanket for the Riverbank Community Pool. Any questions?
I have one question. Is this something that's retractable? Is it, how does it work?
It's on a reel, and what the lifeguards do each night, which usually we close our pool around 9:30, 10 at night, they roll it out, and it sits on top of the pool. And then in the morning, the two lifeguards roll it onto a reel, push it aside, and the water stays nice and warm, and it doesn't get all of the elements cooling it off throughout the night, so the heater doesn't generally need to kick on. the night, so the heater doesn't generally need to kick on.
Is this the type of thermal blanket that could prevent a child from getting underneath it and drowned? Is it one of those kind?
Not really. It's up, there are pool covers that actually fasten around the pool that you can't get under, but a thermal blanket, it just lays, and it has the, it has like, I think there's three rolls, and so they're not even, they don't come together there. I mean, they come together, but they're not one piece.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Would this come from the excesses in the general budget, general fund also?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Well, excess.
Any other further comments? This is a public hearing. Is there any public comments on item 6.3? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for additional comments, questions, or a motion.
I'll motion that we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a dual motion to, a dual second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving to item 7, 7.1, staff comments.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, you may have noticed, we have added a new television set. We have a, hopefully that will help the ability to see the PowerPoints in the audience as well as with our new projection system. The upgrades that are being made to the City Council chambers for improving the sound and visual quality are being used, being made with restricted funds called public education and government funding. And so, this is, these are monies that can only be used for this type of work, so I wanted to let the community know that. In addition to that, there's a budget advisory committee this Wednesday at 6 o'clock in this room. I will not be able to attend that meeting because I'm going to be attending the Planning Commissioners Academy in Burlingame with three members of our planning commission. I'd like to appreciate that their willingness to take three days out of their lives to devote to learning more about planning and to be able to apply that in the City of Riverbank. In addition to that, we have a new City Council meeting schedule starting in April, so our April meetings will be on Tuesday, and that's April 8th and April 22nd. So, encourage the community to come out for our new meeting schedule. And that concludes staff comments for this evening.
Thank you. Item 7.2, council authority member comments. Councilmember Cruz?
The only thing I just wanted to make note is really looking forward to the Riverfest, and I hope everyone's putting that on their calendars for April 26th. So, I just have short comments tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
I attended, along with Casa del Rio Family Resource Center, a tour of the Stanislaus Family Justice Center, and the purpose of the tour was to inform and strengthen the collaboration between the Riverbank community and the services that are offered at the facility that is available for families and individuals. And I wanted to thank the Riverbank Youth Baseball Association for their commitment to our youth. They've been providing sports activities to our youth for 51 years, and I think that's really just awesome. And I walked in the baseball parade, which I found out the mayor did, too, which marked the opening day of baseball season. So, I'm inviting everyone to come out, enjoy and support our youth, and the home games are usually at Castleburg Park and California Avenue baseball fields. And just to remind everyone that Love Riverbank is April the 5th, so we're calling for all nonprofit groups, faith-based groups, businesses, neighbors, and friends. Sign up online at love riverbank.com, and this is your time to actually show and show your pride and your appreciation for our city of action. And there are several activities that we can all participate in. Thank you.
Councilmember Tucker?
Well, as usual, everybody's stolen my thunder tonight, but that's okay. They're all good comments. I just, I made note, or make note of the fact that the website's improving. Our city website has undergone a few changes, and I think those are for the positive. And I appreciate that we're trying to improve our technology here within the chambers to allow our audience to better see what we see up here. And I never can say thank you enough to our park and rec directors, Sue Fitzpatrick for all her work and for her presentations this evening. A lot of work, and much appreciated. Thank you, Sue.
Vice Mayor Campbell, please.
I'd just like to comment that the weather's getting nicer, and that means there'll be more children out, more people out on the streets, biking, walking. So, be careful, the days are longer. It's harder to see sometimes because of the way the days are, and let's have a safe spring.
Thank you. As you all know, that the tax proposal for road will not be on this ballot coming up on 2014. It may be on 2016. Some, there's a lot of misconceptions about the tax measure, what it's going to be used for. A lot of it was not going to be used for biking, pedestrian, at least that's the perception from the public. We have something called complete streets. Anytime that we do major repairs to a street, we do a complete street. That includes biking and pedestrian paths. What this tells me is that we're going to have two years without funding to do two major streets. That is Rozell, and that is Patterson, two of most dangerous streets out there for pedestrian and those with disabilities. So, I think it's incumbent upon us as we progress, if we want to have this tax initiative, that we get the proper word out and how we, as a city council, would like to see our streets improve and how they will, you know, include biking and pedestrian. Cat Country, want to tell me about that?
Pardon?
Cat Country.
Cat Country.
Coming to visit.
Oh, yes, they've reached out, and they're going to be coming to City, like at the McDonald's from 5 to 9 a.m., 5 to 9 a.m. at McDonald's at Oakdale and Patterson, and looking forward to having everybody come out and greet them. This is just part of their, their normal--
That's the 26th?
That's this Wednesday, yes. This Wednesday.
I just wanted to clarify that, since you weren't excited about that in the past. Okay. With that, that concludes the council comments. Before we adjourn, we have closed session, which is item 8.1, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Adrian Allen and Frances Allen versus City of Riverbank, Stanislaus Court Case Number 670739. Before we go into closed session, this is an agendized item. Is there any public comment on item 8.1? Seeing none, we close to, we go to closed session. Joining to closed session. Reconvene the City Council meeting for March 24th, 2014. Item 9, report from closed session. Item 9.1, report from closed session. Item 8.1, conference with legal counsel existing litigation where provided direction to staff. With that, meeting adjourned.